We'll go ahead then. Welcome, everybody, to the September 11th, 2025 Lewisville Planning Commission meeting. If we could start out with a roll call, please.
Chair Brown Eyes?
Here.
Vice Chair Basket?
Here.
Commissioner Banks?
Here.
Commissioner Shoy?
Here.
Commissioner Hunt?
Here.
Commissioner Mihaly?
Here.
Commissioner Moline?
Here.
Thank you. Then entertain a motion to approve this evening's agenda.
So moved.
Thank you. Second, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Looking back, we'll do the minutes separately. Does anybody have any notes they wanted to make on the April 10th minutes? Seeing none, entertain a motion.
Move approval?
Thank you.
Of the April minutes?
All right. I'll second it. All right. Excellent, thank you. All in favor? Aye. May 8th minutes. Any notes people wanted to make?
I'm abstaining because I was not present.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Anybody else? Okay. Motion. We have second. All in favor? Aye.
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 Motion carries June 12th minutes.
I'm abstaining.
Me too.
E3. Motion to approve June 10th, 12th minutes. Second?
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Now we'll open it up for public comment for items that are not on this evening's agenda. If there's something you wanted to speak to, to exercise free speech.
Yeah, we just put on the agenda, there was a noticing error with the first case that says postponed on your agenda. We just wanted to make folks in the audience aware that that is rescheduled for September 25th in case they did come tonight or would like to speak on it. Now would be the time to speak on that because it's not on the agenda formally for tonight.
Not on the agenda anymore. Got it. All right. Thank you. And I don't have access to the online world. It seems that nobody's there. Okay, great. Thanks. Appreciate that. All right. With that then, I will now open the public hearing on a request for a resolution amendment to the North Louisville General Development Plan. The purpose of the hearing is to receive evidence regarding the application materials and provide a public forum for all interested parties who wish to comment on this request before the planning commission. The procedure for the public hearing will be as follows. First, there'll be a presentation and testimony by city staff, followed by questions from the planning commission to staff. Next, we will have a presentation and testimony by the applicant, followed by questions from the planning commission to the applicant. After these two presentations, members of the public who have joined this meeting in person by computer or telephone may speak regarding the application. Anyone who would like to speak in person is asked to complete a speaker card, which are available on the small table outside the door there. Use the raise hand function if you're participating by computer or star nine if you're calling in by telephone. Please limit your comments to three minutes per person. Two people present at the meeting may pool their minutes to allow one person to speak for up to a total of six minutes. The purpose of public comment is to receive public testimony, and it's not a forum for debate or dialogue. Commenters are encouraged to raise pertinent issues and may ask questions for clarity. However, these questions will not be directly answered during the public comment period. The applicant and staff will then be allowed to make a closing statement, help then close the public hearing, and no further testimony or other evidence will be received unless the commission decides to reopen the hearing. The planning commission will discuss the matter and may approve, approve with conditions, deny, or continue to a future meeting. Public hearings are recorded for the public record. All testimony must be presented after stating your full name and whether you are a resident of Louisville or otherwise. Does anyone participating in this hearing object to the procedure I have described? Seeing none? Thank you. Can you speak to your notification on this one?
Yes, public notice has been satisfied.
Thank you. And are there any planning commission members who have disclosures? All right. Thank you. Take it away.
Thank you, Chair, and good evening, commissioners. My name is Matt Post, Senior Planner on the Community Development Team. The item before you tonight is the North Louisville GDP First Amendment, otherwise referred to as the Highline Davidson GDP Amendment, some of the application materials. The request is for approval of Resolution Number 10, Series 2025, recommending to the City Council approval of the North Louisville General Development Plan First Amendment to allow residential land uses at 2101 North Courtesy Road. This property is located in the Planned Community Zone District. Within the PCZD District, that Planned Community Zone District, a general development plan is required to establish the overall framework for development, which includes proposed land uses, development types, and densities. Can include bulk standards, locations of public facilities if necessary, and open spaces, and a coordinated street network, again, if necessary, that is consistent with adopted plans and policies in the city. The GDP functions as a binding agreement between the city and the developer or the property owner, and it serves as a guiding document for any future development, subdivision, or zoning review that may take place on that property. The proposed amendment before you tonight would permit residential land uses on a property where only commercial land uses are currently permitted. The amendment would also include yard and bulk standards and/or dimensional standards. Those includes items like setbacks, lot coverage, and height. Then also density limitations would be applied through this particular general development plan. Just to note that if approved this evening, this general development plan amendment does not entitle the property with a development plan or proposal. It simply would allow land uses and dimensional standards so that a development could potentially occur via our planned unit development and subdivision application process. So again, any actual development would be approved and entitled via separate processes, PUDs, and Platts that both would come before the planning commission and city council for consideration at public hearings.
Thank you very much.
Starting with some background here, again, the site is 2101 North Courtesy Road. I have some vicinity maps in later slides. What you see on the screen here is an exhibit that depicts the existing North Louisville General Development Plan. The property at 2101 North Courtesy Road is currently occupied by the Louisville Boat and RV Storage, which allows for the outdoor storage of RVs, boats, and trailers in a secured and fenced facility. The existing North Louisville General Development Plan that regulates land uses on this site was originally approved in 1989, and it covered 65 acres of the north side of Louisville, what's depicted in dark gray on the screen. The original GDP allowed for commercial, office, residential, and mixed-use residential land uses. Again, this particular site was predominantly commercial. It's hard to tell what the exact parcel lineup is here. I worked with the applicant to determine what the actual use breakdown is. It functions as a split zone. There's some residential land use allowed, maybe in a corner, but the majority of the property, based on this general development plan, indicates that commercial uses would be the predominant land use that's permitted here. Portions of this original GDP, the majority of it, rather, have been incorporated into other general development plans in the area. That would include the Takota General Development Plan, the North End General Development Plan, and the Foundry General Development Plan, and their associated amendments. What's left of this original North Louisville GDP includes the subject site, the property that is directly east to it that's currently occupied by the Divine K9, and then some additional property on the east side of Highway 42 that extends up to South Boulder Road. But again, the majority of this GDP has been absorbed into other GDPs in the city. Continuing on with background, again, the current use on the site was permitted and allowed under the Davidson Highline Planned Unit Development, which authorized improvements both on this property and east of this property. The existing buildings that make up the Divine K9 were all approved as part of that original PUD approval. That was approved in 1990. The property's been subdivided multiple times, with the most recent subdivision occurring in 2021, which resulted in the creation of Lot 1A, which is the site of Divine K9 right now, and Lot 2A, which is the subject property highlighted in yellow in the exhibit on this slide. Prior to submitting a formal, a bit of additional background here just before this application. Prior to submitting the formal application for this GDP amendment, the applicant did present a concept plan to the City Council in October of 2024. As the planning commission is aware, the concept plan goes directly to City Council to solicit non-binding advisory feedback on a development proposal prior to developing a formal application. The applicant presented the GDP amendment to allow residential land uses and a concept plan that would allow permanently affordable deed-restricted home ownership townhomes along with their concept plan. The plan that was presented to City Council envisioned 44 to 48 dwelling units on the site. That equates to 14 to 15 dwelling units per acre. The concept plan that the applicant provided during that plan hearing is also included in your staff packets. You may have seen that as an attachment. I also have it in slides here. I just want to make a note that this particular concept plan that's presented tonight doesn't in no way bind the applicant to that concept plan. It's simply provided as a visual representation for what a full buildout of the site may look like if the GDP amendment is approved. At that concept plan hearing, the City Council provided generally supportive feedback regarding that proposed GDP amendment to allow residential land uses and the subsequent development concept for the 44 to 48 dwelling units of middle-income deed-restricted affordable housing. Moving further into the proposal here, or into the proposal, of course, the request is for an amendment to the North Louisville GDP that would allow those residential land uses as discussed. The general development plan includes, the proposal rather, includes specific requests or proposals for land uses as part of this amendment. Those land use types would include single-family dwellings and duplexes, multifamily dwellings, accessory dwelling units, and accessory structures that would be typical of residential development. The applicant is also proposing a maximum of 51 dwelling units on this site, which would equate to a density of 17.42 dwelling units per acre. It's important to note that that density represents an upper limit on the number of dwelling units that may be allowed on-site. It does not represent a minimum requirement. So we'll cover that more in an analysis section as well. The applicant indicated in this GDP amendment application that this amendment is intended to facilitate redevelopment of the site as a permanently affordable deed-restricted middle-income multifamily housing community with the potential for some units to be provided at market rate. I'll let the applicant talk more about potential development plans and the mixed income distribution on the site. Continuing with the proposal, some details here. The primary access point is proposed off of Heckla, Heckla Drive, all the way. I'm sorry, it's proposed on the west side of the site at Heckla Drive. You can see that there's actually an access easement that bisects that property east to west. That actually punches all the way through to Highway 42 and crosses the Divine K9 site. The applicant has no intention of utilizing that access point to Highway 42. We've referred this particular application, I'm sorry, we referred the concept plan application to CDOT during their initial reviews, and CDOT wasn't supportive of an additional access point on Highway 42 in this particular location. So the applicant has no plans for an access point to punch through. So Heckla Drive is the in-and-out access point here. Looking further into the GDP, the applicant has included a conceptual common area on the development plan. You can see that shown in the center of the site with the intent of including open space for community members. It's important to note that open space is a conceptual representation on this site and that open space during the review process is actually required via PUD applications. And so when we review PUDs, we'll ensure that open space is provided, that is functional, preserves any significant natural features that would potentially be present on the site, and then also provides for recreational opportunity and convenience of use for residents. I'm bringing this up specifically because there are no specific open space standards that are provided in the bulk and dimensional standard table, which is in line with other GDP amendments in the area, specifically the Takota GDP. So we'll rely on the PUD review criteria, which mandates open space on all developments, regardless of size, scope, scale, or use. Continuing with the proposal here, the general development plan depicts a future right-of-way dedication at Calix Avenue, and I'll just move back here so that you can see the slide on the right side of this particular screen. You'll see a proposed Calix right-of-way dedication. The dedication here is depicted in green on your screen. The dark blue lines are existing completed sections of the Calix right-of-way through Steel Ranch, past Lanterns, and then down into Kestrel. The Calix Avenue connection is called out as a requirement of our transportation master plan. It's actually highlighted as one of the priorities of the transportation master plan, specifically to complete the connection from Pascal to Summit View Drive. So this particular proposal was presented to City Council during the concept plan. Staff indicated the policy requirements that would call for the Calix Avenue connection here. This particular GDP amendment will simply show that a dedication of right-of-way is required. We will not receive a dedication at this time. That'll occur at the PUD and/or subdivision stage. It's also important to note that the City Council did express some support for potentially allowing only pedestrian and bicycle pathway improvements in the Calix Avenue right-of-way dedication as opposed to a full right-of-way buildout that would actually connect vehicular, connect the vehicular network in this location. That we'll continue to work with the applicant on those details. I think City Council considered the constraints of the development being a deed-restricted affordable community. We will, however, ask for the full dedication of that land for a potential future buildout of Calix Avenue. So again, conceptually shown on the GDP, we'll get that dedication through a formal development entitlement process. The GDP amendment also includes bulk and dimensional standards that would be reflective of traditional townhome development patterns and densities. For example, the GDP allows for a zero-foot setback for attached townhome units that would allow for shared walls and individual property ownership via any future subdivision as the property boundaries would be reflective of those private ownership spaces. So that is, again, when we have a townhome and a shared wall, there's actually a property boundary on that shared wall, which allows for those townhomes to be the fee simple sale of those townhomes for homeownership opportunities as opposed to a for-rent product. No minimum lot coverage requirement. Again, that's indicative of typical townhome developments. We have a 20-foot lot width that's proposed. That's also reflective of what's in the Takota General Development Plan, where existing Steel Ranch townhomes were developed. There are setbacks also called out on this particular bulk standard. Setbacks include a 15-foot, rather, front yard setback from the public right-of-way of Heckla Drive, and then a 10-foot side yard setback from the public right-of-way. Again, that would specifically be Heckla Drive. We've worked with the applicant to work in a reduced five-foot side setback for the principal uses that would be proposed adjacent to the Calix Avenue dedication. This condition would generally allow the five-foot setback that would be measured from the back of a sidewalk. If the full road would be built out, so it'd be a full road, right-of-way to right-of-way, and back a sidewalk to back a sidewalk, and a five-foot side setback on the Calix Avenue connection on the east side of that site gives the applicant the opportunity to establish the density that they're looking to achieve, and it's also supported in our comprehensive plan policies and documents, which I'll cover later on in this slide. On this presentation, I'm sorry. Continuing on with the proposal, in addition to those setback standards and lot coverage requirements, the applicant is proposing height limitations with a height transition zone on this GDP. The applicant has requested a maximum height of 40 feet on-site, and those structures would be limited to the green area. It's depicted here on this screen. Anywhere around that, structures would be limited to 35 feet in height. The 35-foot height maximum or limitation is the standard citywide height limit for all single-family dwellings in the city at 35. So again, the request here is for a 40-foot height limitation with a height transition zone included. Again, working with the applicant to address some resident concerns that were brought up during the concept plan hearing and provide a transition specifically to the duplexes to the north in Lanterns with this transition zone as it's proposed. The GDP, again, as mentioned, includes density limitations as well. So 51 dwelling units, 17.4 dwelling units per acre on-site. And to reiterate what I said previously, that would simply be a cap on the amount of residential dwelling units. It is not a minimum number. The applicant is looking for the flexibility in designing this site. And again, the actual density numbers would be established via the PUD, but 51 and 17.42 would technically be permitted if this GDP were to pass tonight. The applicant has also indicated the final unit count would be determined, again, through that site design and entitlement and subdivision process. There's lots of other items and considerations in there, including utility separations, open space requirements, so on and so forth. So I'll let the applicant speak more to what they think the density may be on-site through a development plan. You can see here on the slide, I've presented two exhibits. The first is also presented in your staff packet. It's a comparison of densities of surrounding developments in the area and the proposed density of the North Louisville GDP. You can see that the most comparable densities would include the Steel Ranch Apartments or the North Main Ass Steel Ranch Apartments at 24.2 dwelling units per acre, and then the Steel Ranch Townhomes, which are built out at nine dwelling units per acre. And the North Louisville GDP is proposed there at 17.42. On this screen is also the concept plan that was presented by the applicant to the City Council that's reflective of that 48 dwelling unit count. I should highlight that it's 44 dwelling units with four additional ADUs that are adjacent to these townhomes. The applicant has also indicated a desire to permit ADUs as an income-generating opportunity for some of these homeownership folks on this site. This is reflective of the 48 dwelling unit count that was reviewed by City Council. Again, this concept plan is not binding on the applicant. It's here for visual reference of what a buildout would potentially look like with this GDP amendment. Apologies. So moving into analysis here, the property, again, is located in the Planned Community Zone District and requires a general development plan, which is that contractual zoning document that will establish land uses and other regulations. All GDP amendments follow the same process and requirements as the original GDP approval. The municipal code does not have any significant or thorough review criteria for GDPs, interestingly enough. Although there are specific purposes of the Planned Community Districts laid out, those purposes include encouraging, preserving, and improving the health, safety, and welfare of the community through contemporary land planning principles and coordinated design, and then recognizing the economic and cultural advantages of an integrated planned community development that provides areas for various housing types and land uses. In further analysis of the general development plan, we also reviewed our comprehensive plans and then other adopted plan policies to determine applicability and conformance in this particular proposal. Let's say firstly, the South Boulder Road Small Area Plan specifically designates this property as medium-density residential with a plan indicating that medium-density residential development is between 10 and 20 dwelling units per acre. Again, that's in the South Boulder Road Small Area Plan. The currently adopted comprehensive plan identifies this property as being in the Highway 42 urban neighborhood, I'm sorry, urban corridor with an urban neighborhood designation. So there's an urban pattern, and then there's the neighborhood designation. There are two different categories that describe those development types. The urban pattern is described or designated and calls for interconnected street networks with multimodal transportation opportunities that would include development on smaller parcels, specifically street-oriented building placement when we're considering setbacks that are proposed here with an emphasis on pedestrian scale and massing. Again, that would be that urban pattern. And then the neighborhood designation that's associated with that identifies preferred development types that are predominantly residential land uses and range from low to high-density multifamily communities. So again, comprehensive plan, neighborhood, or urban neighborhood designation. Staff find the proposed densities of this general development plan are in line with those densities that are contemplated by the South Boulder Road Small Area Plan and the comprehensive plan. But the comprehensive plan also includes housing policies that would support this GDP amendment. The principle NH5 on the screen here encourages a mix of housing types and pricing to meet economic, social, and multi-generational needs of current and future residents in the city of Louisville. And policy NH5.1 includes goals to provide housing that meets the needs of seniors, empty nesters, disabled individuals, renters, first-time homebuyers, and others through a variety of housing prices and styles and types. Moving further into our adopted plans, we did review this proposal against the recently adopted housing plan and found that the proposed amendment supports the plan's three primary goals, which include increasing opportunities for residential development in appropriate locations, expanding and maintaining affordable housing for low- and middle-income households, including those in the local workforce in our community, and then diversifying housing stock by encouraging mixed-use and mixed-income neighborhoods with a wider range of housing types for various household sizes, incomes, and demographics. Continuing on with our housing plan, there are relevant strategies and action items that are included in the housing plan and are articulated as action items. Action items in the housing plan that are relevant to this particular proposal include action item 1.1, which includes establishing criteria and identifying areas for zoning changes to support additional residential development, including rezoning underutilized commercial properties. The GDP amendment is, for all intents and purposes, a rezone of the property. It would be subject to referendum, and it changes the land use allowances on the particular property. Right now, commercial is only permitted. If this GDP amendment moves through tonight, it does change the allowed land uses, although the underlying zone district of PCZD will remain the same. It will go from PCZDC, commercial, to PCZDR, residential. Action item 1.2 of the housing plan encourages considering offering a height bonus or additional density for projects that include affordable or mixed-income housing. So the applicant's request for the 40-foot height limitation specifically in a transition zone while considering the exterior of the perimeter of the site is in line with this adopted area plan. And of course, the proposed density is in line with this particular action item here as well. The last action item here is action item 3.2, which includes recommendations for expanding allowances for multifamily housing in existing commercial zones and supporting standalone residential development in existing commercial areas. And of course, this request to allow residential land uses on a property that has historically only allowed commercial uses would satisfy action item number 3.2. So in closing, with staff analysis here, we found that the proposed GDP amendment to allow residential land uses is consistent with multiple adopted policies, including the comprehensive plan, the South Boulder Road Small Area Plan, and the recently adopted Louisville Housing Plan. The proposed amendment supports key policy objectives that are contained within those policy documents, which include diversifying Louisville's housing stock, promoting mixed-income and workforce housing opportunities in Louisville where appropriate, encouraging residential development on underutilized commercial properties, and allowing density and height incentives to advance the affordability goals that are outlined in the housing plan. That concludes staff's presentation. And so staff recommends approval of Resolution 10, Series 2025. And so staff recommends approval of Resolution 10 Series 2025, recommending to the city council, approval of the North Louisville General Development Plan, First Amendment to allow residential land uses at 2101 North Courtesy Road. Happy to answer any questions. The applicant does not have a presentation tonight, but they are prepared to answer any questions and speak to their project.
Thank you very much. I really appreciate the holistic overview. And I think it's also really important that we are kind of taking back and referring to the plans that we have paid good money for. So thank you for taking that all into account in your presentation. I'll now open it up for commission questions of staff. Commissioner Marlene.
Hello, everyone. I have a question, Mr. Post, Planner Post, about the expansion, or excuse me, the connection of K-Links Avenue to the north. Is it my understanding that there's an open space strip to the north of this parcel? And so I'm just wondering, who will, like, will the city actually be in control of making that connection, since it looks like it would end up having to go through a piece of open space? So I'm wondering if you could speak about that. Thank you.
Yeah, that piece of property that you're referring to, Commissioner, is actually dedicated right-of-way that was dedicated as part of the lanterns PUD development. And so that right-of-way comes all the way down and is concurrent with the northern boundary of this property.
So there's an existing right-of-way that goes all the way through that? Is there some open space there or not? Maybe I'm misreading that.
It's, I think it's simply unimproved right-of-way. So it's dedicated. The right-of-way has been dedicated. The road section has not been completed there, I think for turnaround purposes. There's, there's a, yeah.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Great. How about in the room? Do you have any questions? I see Commissioner Hunt.
I have a question, and it just might be part of me not fully understanding how all these pieces fit together. But I know that the current plans are for, you know, affordable housing. It's not a binding plan. So are there opportunities down the road to make sure that's actually what happens? That it has dedicated affordable housing?
Yeah, I'll answer your question by saying at this point, there is no entitlement restriction in the GDP that would mandate affordable housing. So if this property, if the GDP amendment moved forward here, it wouldn't, it wouldn't, it wouldn't require affordable housing on this site. So that answers your question.
I guess my question, I know that, but my question, I guess, is are there opportunities and further reviews to make sure that happens?
Yeah, via inclusionary housing ordinance, yes. But that, I should, I should say that our inclusionary housing ordinance obviously only requires a 12% onsite affordable dedication or the fee-in-lieu, based on the applicant's proposals and conversations with the applicant and what was presented to city council via the concept plan, the majority of all the units on site will be in that middle-income-deed restricted range, which would actually exceed our 12% requirement, although I believe they also intend to include 12% at a 60% AMI, which is what our inclusionary housing ordinance does. But again, I'll let the applicant speak to that.
Great. Thanks. Yeah. Commissioner Mahaly?
Question about traffic. I just want to make sure I understand what's proposed and what's in the plan. I think you said that the connections to Courtesy Road are through Heckla Drive and then also up north to Pascal. Is that correct?
Correct.
And so if a tenant were to go north, I don't recall the Heckla Drive intersection, but I think it may be a one-way turn. Is it possible to go north there, or is all the northbound traffic funneling up to Pascal?
I'd have to look at the map. Gabby, can you share my screen again, please?
And, you know, it's probably obvious where I'm going. I'm looking at pinch points, and we are, you know, a, we have an established neighborhood, understanding that it's, you know, consistent with what's in the comprehensive plan, but I'm thinking of pinch points if we're creating a traffic issue in that neighborhood by, I'm wondering if all of our roads are sufficiently sized to handle that influx of, was it 50 new units? I don't remember the density, but, you know, on the order of that, I'll have, you know, if they have to go north, which is a common way to get to Boulder, if, you know, are we, are we creating a traffic problem by funneling it all to an existing road that may or may not be sized correctly?
Yeah, I'd have to look at the existing conditions, Commissioner Mahaly, to answer your question regarding maybe the turning movements and/or the level of service outside of this development. But what I can say regarding traffic is that we do have a, what, a trigger for when a traffic study would be required to determine whether or not the road network and the existing improvements can accommodate the existing volume. That, what we look at is whether or not a proposed development will generate 50 or more trips in a peak hour on any given day. And so that would be an AM peak hour or a PM peak hour. As of right now, based on our ITE trip generation manuals and then some initial data that was given to us by the applicant, this particular proposal with, even with the density of 51 units, would not meet the minimum requirements for staff to ask for the transportation impact study. However, in the event that a development does come in, we would likely ask for a traffic letter, which would give us an idea of what the volumes in those peak hours look like. From there, our city engineers would make a determination as to whether or not it's appropriate to actually request a study to address those items that are of concern that you just mentioned.
Thank you. Yeah, and to be specific, I'm picking at the assumptions of said assessment. In particular, if it's only possible to go to one direction through a single way, you know, via Pascal, I want to make sure that that's being accounted for in that, in that evaluation or determination of a, of a traffic impact.
Yeah, and I think we'd be able to make that determination via a traffic letter or study at the time of a development application.
That's it for now. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Troy?
Thank you for your suppose. That was a lot of information in there. Appreciate it. Just while we're on this slide, is it a safe assumption that the dedicated right-of-way connecting the two sections of Calix Avenue would prevent transit on that east-west, that private access out to Highway 42 from the site?
You know, in the review process, because there's an established private access easement across those two boundaries, we would ask that the applicant not impede that access point or amend the actual easement that's there with consent from the adjacent property owner, who would also be party to that access easement. I would probably need to look through the original entitlement documents also to ensure that there's no emergency access considerations there that were originally considered. But that would be the process, though, that we would consider there.
That's interesting. Okay. And I know Commissioner Hunt brought it up, but I just wanted to kind of verify again. In the original 2024 concept plan, there was specific language that was cited about specifically deed restricted as, as the intent. And I think in the current language, the way the work pack is, packet is written, it says, the applicant has indicated that the GDP amendment is intended to facilitate redevelopment of the site as a permanently affordable, middle-income, multifamily housing community with the potential for some units to be offered at market rate. But it, that section didn't include the verbiage from the original 2024 concept of deed restricted. And I just want to confirm that that maybe got filtered down a little bit and is definitely not a commitment from the applicant?
I would probably call that out as an omission on my part. If that was, that was probably a mistake. Also, I was, being that we're not actually entitling affordable deed restricted units via this process, I also wanted to be cautious in my wording. Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Understood. Thank you.
Good. Thank you. Commissioner Bangs?
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I'd echo Commissioner Troy's comments. This was a very comprehensive pack, so thanks to staff for putting all of this together. I just, first, I want to just reinforce what Commissioner Mahaly pointed out with regards to our future applicant coming back with more specifics and traffic impact. We know there's potentially further development south of this particular location, where we've already expressed some concerns, and I think a traffic study is underway. So it's a consideration for the future, obviously not for this particular application. My question is more specific around Calix Avenue. So it sounds as though, you know, city council was supportive of pedestrian and cycle access. From what you said, Planner Post, I heard about a five-foot setback on the access, and it sounded like that would be consistent with potential conversion of that avenue to vehicular access. Is that, I guess I've got a couple of questions. Is there a reason it's considered for pedestrian and cycle only currently? Is the expectation that it will be vehicular in the future? And am I right in assuming the five-foot setback would accommodate vehicles should it change in the future?
Sure. I'll say, I'll start with just indicating that staff's position on the matter is we'll administer the adopted policy, which is for the completion and construction of Calix Avenue in that location. Obviously, the planning commission can make a recommendation on that, and the city council will, can choose to deviate from the adopted policy. We presented to the concept, at the concept plan hearing, I explicitly presented the policy requirement for the Calix Avenue connection. Again, the applicant obviously was able to present there as well and presented their, their indication or their plan to just include pedestrian and/or cycle improvements there, and council showed favor to that. However, in requiring the dedication, we would ask for the full width of the dedication in that location for a potential future right-of-way improvement to continue the street network there. I can't necessarily answer the full question for you as far as when that may happen. I think we'd have to work through the details at that formal development plan application that would include maybe a full cost estimate from the applicant or with the city on what the actual build-out of that roadway would look like. This is, you know, directly from our engineering team, and then what potential funding opportunities would look like there as well, obviously being considerate of the fact that, you know, the applicant is an affordable housing developer. That is what they do, and they intend to secure funding from limited sources in order to establish this. So that's, that's a long way to answer that question. In regard to the five-foot setback, the 50-foot, if we're considering a 50-foot right-of-way dedication, the existing 50-foot right-of-way dedication both north and south of the site is established back of sidewalk to back of sidewalk. So there's a different flow line to flow line measurement there. So if we continue that all the way down, then we would have an attached sidewalk condition that would match what's north of that site, and then that setback would be measured from the edge of right-of-way or the beginning of the private property, which would be, should be at the back of the sidewalk. So there would be a five-foot distance between, at a minimum, the back of sidewalk and where that structure would be located.
Great. Very clear. Thank you.
And actually, just to hammer that a little further. So, right, this, the completion of Calix has long been viewed as an important for connectivity amongst these neighborhoods. So it seems like it's an important part, right? It was elevated to being up in the transportation master plan, right?
Correct.
So are there any particular reasons, other than the affordability of it, that we would be interested as a city in entertaining pedestrian bicycle access?
You know, I, from a staff perspective and a policy perspective, I don't know that I can answer that question accurately.
Sounds good.
Yeah, I would say, again, I would, you know, our default position is to administer the policy, which would call for the full connection there. Yeah, yeah.
I just, what I'm hearing, though, is that you're going to require that the full dedication be there so we have the options when we get down to brass tacks on this. We can revisit.
That's correct. Yes.
I'm going to move away from Calix Avenue for just a second. I understand that while this particular topic would come through a PUD review and understanding that this would be moving through this GDP amendment to a PCZDR zoning classification, understanding the adjacent developments that are already in place, was there any staff assessment of the stormwater capabilities of the site if there were another 50 units of impermeable development within this area?
Yeah, so I'll let the applicant speak to this, but they are, their storm detention will be actually on the adjacent side on Lot 1A. I believe there's an easement that accounts for that. So I'll let, I'll let the, I'll let the applicant speak to that. But that was not part of, we, during the concept plan process, we did issue advisory comments to the applicant that they would need to obviously find a stormwater and detention solution. I believe their response is they have that right now on Lot 1A with existing agreements. So I'll let them speak to that if that's acceptable.
Thank you.
And discussing, just back to our city housing plan. So would it be inaccurate for me to say that deed restricted is a big goal? That we don't have much of it in Louisville?
I would say no, that's not inaccurate. Yeah, you're, that is, that is a goal of the housing plan, if I answered that correctly.
Yeah, I mean, it's considered kind of the desired goal. And so this is the first time we've seen anything like this in the past long time. I'm not even sure what we have in the city right now.
We have Kestrel just to the south of this right now, which is a more expansive deed restricted. It's, I don't believe it's middle-income deed restricted. The applicant may actually be able to speak to that a little more as well.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Yep.
Any additional questions for staff? Seeing none, why don't we open up, yeah, if we can have applicant, applicant representative be available for some questions here? Maybe a few words. If you want to address any of the questions that, you know, we've raised along the way here.
If I don't, I'll have Eric do it.
Well, exactly, yes.
My name is Michael Reese. I'm a housing consultant working with Thistle Communities to bring this project to fruition. I might bounce around on a couple of topics that I just heard during some of the discussion, but you are correct. Deed-restricted housing is lacking in Louisville, and this is one of the larger projects specifically for the missing middle population that you hear quite a bit about over the last few years, which is defined by area median income. Area median income between 80% and 120% of area median income is the missing middle targets. There was another statement about the inclusionary zoning requirements that are already in existence and the 12%. And Thistle's been working from the start with Habitat for Humanity here in Boulder County to be part of this project, and we've identified some of the units. We can go to the site plan if we could. We might want to talk about that. And that brings some of the units within the habitat sphere of below 80, below 60, depending on their marketplace. Keep going.
So actually, if either of you could speak a little bit to Thistle's background at some point.
Yeah, fair enough. That's fair enough. Yes, Thistle Communities is a housing development nonprofit, been around for about 40 years, 30-something years now, based out of Boulder, has affordable housing in the below 80% range in Boulder and Longmont, both rental and deed-restricted homeownership opportunities. Another area of their mission is to work with mobile home parks across the state. So you might read their name in a variety of news outlets when mobile home parks, parks become resident-owned communities. We call them rocks in the housing world because we like acronyms. And so Thistle is pretty much the lead nonprofit entity in that world, separate from what we're doing, but I think it speaks to their experience with working with communities and affordable, affordable, and affordable developments and working with homeowners associations within those developments and working with the deed-restricted nature of the underlying homeownership and rental structure. So the other thing I heard and might be Eric's conversation is that this property came, was owned by a single owner for a number of years, and they recently sold this parcel to Thistle a couple of years ago. We've been bringing this forward. Concept plan was last year. This was, we really paid, tried to pay attention to what would be feasible when we brought it through the concept plan, because we know, you know, once you start setting those goalposts down, the community can hold us to it. This property was always designed to have, we don't have it here. Could we go to a larger site? I want to show where the drainage would go. I guess I didn't know, notice where it was on the site. Let's see where. That'll work, actually. Sure. That's southeast of the green line, and south of the roadway there, you'll see a handful of RVs. That is all intended to be drainage retention area. And it's already dedicated within the tunnel work of the property through joint agreements. So it's construction easement, there's drainage easement, there's traffic, traffic routing easement through. So there's construction easement, there's drainage easement, there's traffic, traffic routing easement through. So we, and we'll have to probably handle some of it on the southeast corner of our site. But we think we're pretty, we've got that one covered. And so I did, so again, Thistle's been doing affordable housing. We're here, I heard that, hey, if you do this, we're not holding anybody through. We're at the beginning of a, this is what we do, this is what Thistle does. We're at the beginning of the process, we have to do the PUD, primary PUD, PUD process. There'll be more public hearings. When we started the public process last year, we brought in a traffic study engineer to do some initial counts because it tends to be what is of concern for folks, you know, one of the items. And we just wanted to get general, general counts. They do fall short of a required study. But in all honesty, we've already secured the engineer to, to work with us, would probably just exercise the, the full study. And, and, and what we're really waiting on now is, is bringing the full study through the PUD process with or without Calix. It really does come down to, at some point, Calix needs to be decided upon. We've reached middle ground for tonight, 50-foot easement, bigger than we would have originally proposed, but it leaves all the cards remaining on the table to, to bring forward Calix someday in the future. And we'd be fine with that. But we just want to, we just, but that also affects traffic counts. If that becomes a built road at the time we build this complex, we want to make sure the traffic study reflects the entry points accurately. And if the, and so that's one of the, all this stuff is linked. Any questions of me, and then there's some technical stuff that maybe Eric would want to go through.
So on that Calix issue, it's, it's all the cost of doing that? Building road as opposed to building pedestrian access?
We were hearing from the neighbors, many maybe behind me right now. When we went through the concept plan process, we've been doing this a long time and most people come and they don't like what we're doing. We didn't get any of that. They just didn't really want Calix to go through. So there may be different topics tonight, but, you know, Calix, it has to get resolved at some point. And we just, we keep kicking the can and we'll kick it until we can't kick it anymore, but, you know.
Right.
We, we don't want to pay for it. And I don't think the neighbors want it. So, but it's in this traffic study from last century or whatever, and, you know, here we are.
All right. Thank you.
Make a recommendation.
A couple of things real quick. Yeah, I mean, I think the whether affordable housing is required, you know, to be at what level, how many units and all of that is to be determined. Michael keeps reminding me that he's got a whole funding path to go down before they know what they're going to be able to build. So we keep adjusting the product type and kind of what we can do based on what they're going to be able to afford to buy down so that it will be affordable. So that's a big question that we all have. And until Michael's done raising all the money, then we're not going to know. So, so there is that, but, you know, Thistle's an affordable housing developer, so that's the intent here, obviously. I think that there was, I think, a little misspoke. I'm not aware of a Calix right-of-way through the open space. So you can see the purple line ends at the south end of the lanterns. And then there's that open space swath, and then there's the Davidson property. So that entire green area does not have a right-of-way dedication, to my knowledge, at this point. Now, since the city controls the open space, they can run right-of-ways through their open space all they want, I suppose. So we're not, we can't, so, you know, the city would have to, have to do that. And I think just to talk about Calix just a little bit is when you think about the traffic pattern in and out of this property, Heckla is a nice wide street. It is underutilized, frankly. There's times during the day when you can find traffic on there. There's other times when there's zero cars on there. And so I think there's plenty of capacity. The traffic study is going to show that, you know, Heckla, Pascal, the Full Movement Intersection at Pascal and Highway 42 all handles this. I mean, it's like a drop in the bucket compared to what they're designed to handle. So I don't think that's going to be a problem. For people to come and go north through the lanterns development, you know, is that really necessary when you can just go out onto Heckla and have a nice quick trip over to Pascal? So I just, I don't see the practical need for it, except that it's, just happens to be in a traffic report that calls it out to go all the way to South Boulder Road, which it will never do. You know, you'd have to take some of Tebow's property, condemn that, run a road through there. And there's no way to do, if you think about, you know, right across from Snarfs or whatever it is, there's no way to get any kind of an intersection in there that's going to work. You know, the one that's there now, out of the Christopher Plaza Development, is hard to get in and out of, you know. I think ultimately they'll close that left turn out of there because it's just not, not useful. So I just, I really question that this is a secondary north-south avenue to take traffic from South Boulder Road up to Pascal for some reason. So I think we can, we can walk down that road when the PUD is going through. But it would be good to hear from the neighbors whether that's something that they really think is necessary. And that's really it. Yeah, there's, there's really nothing else that I heard that hasn't been answered, so happy to answer anything else.
Thank you. I just would add, I want to thank the staff, very comprehensive, a lot of information. You know, we hope that you can support it and we think it strikes a lot of boxes, both in the community and locally. I mean, residential housing has essentially grown up around this site for the last 40 years. So we're looking forward to redeveloping it into a long-term deed-restricted product.
Commissioner, questions for the applicant? I don't see any raised hands online there or anybody waving their hands. Any questions for the applicant? No? Okay, great. Thank you both. Why don't we take a five-minute break right now? And then we'll come back with public comment. Thank you all. And I forget, I think we, we kept it recording, huh, during the break? So we don't have, we don't have to turn it back on? Okay, good. Excellent.
Hope no one said anything bad.
All right. Thank you all, welcome back. I will now open it up for public comment. I believe there's at least one, well, that was part of the packet. Do we have any, we didn't have any additional via email, we do have some? What's that?
One in-person public comment, yes.
Okay, great. Yes. If we can ask you to limit yourself to three minutes and begin with your name and city of residence, please.
Angela.
And first of all, thank you for coming out this evening.
Well, I have, is this okay?
Yeah, well, if you bend it down because it helps everybody here.
Yeah, I, I just have a quick comment. I'm a neighbor, I live in the Overlook. And I'm very concerned about two issues. One is the, the traffic flow and the safety of that. Because this project is showing only one exit and entrance on Luke and Heckla. And in the Overlook, we are 58 units. We have only one exit point at that exact intersection. So potentially, in an emergency, we could have 100 to 200 cars in that one intersection. And that feels like a hazard to me, that there's no other way in or out. And the other is parking. The, I didn't hear any, any plans for parking. And I don't know how 48 units could park on Heckla. That, I don't think there's enough parking spots there. So I have those two big concerns, particularly the, the traffic one. It feels like a serious safety issue. We, from the Marshall fires, from the Overlook, we could see the flames and we only had one exit to get out. And so it feels very scary to me to have potentially 58 units on this side and 48 units on this side, and how many people that would be. So it just feels very dangerous to me. Just wanted to say that.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your comments. All right. Seeing, and there's nobody online?
We have one online.
Oh, one person online, okay.
Ellen.
Hi, my name is Ellen James and I am a neighbor to the north in the lanterns. And I have three concerns. Number one, we are downhill, directly downhill from the north side, and I'm very concerned about drainage. Number two, what sort of plan is there in terms of limited access so that our backyards and patios don't become a walk-through area? And along with that, what's going to be done to ensure our privacy since your, those units are uphill from us? How is it that you're not going to be able to look directly into our homes, please?
Thank you very much. Appreciate you sharing your thoughts and questions. And that wraps it up for online?
Um, no, we have one more.
One more? Okay, great. Wonderful.
Lisa.
Hi there, is this working now?
Yes.
Perfect. So new to this process, so thank you. It's Don Ford, I'm a resident of the lanterns, like Ellen, directly north of the proposal. If I understand the process right, we will have lots of opportunity to comment on the development itself and the placement of the units and traffic, et cetera. But as it relates to this particular proposal, I wanted to bring to account, to the board's attention, one important fact that I think has not been brought up. And Ellen referred to it, that we are directly downhill and there is about a 15-foot height difference between the land that is being proposed to be developed and our development on the north side and the lanterns. So I'm, by speaking, I am urging the voting members to vote against the height, the granting of height, additional height. Because we are looking, even with a 35-foot, it is about a 50-foot impact on the residents of Lewisville that live in the lanterns. So by speaking, I am asking for, to vote against the height, the additional height granting for this project. Thank you.
Thank you for pointing that out. Appreciate hearing it from, from reality. All right. Do we have anybody else online?
No.
Not this time, okay. Thank you. All right, well, at this point, we're going to move into applicant closing statement.
Have you done that before?
Thank you for joining. Yes, double, double bonus points for joining as a first-timer.
So just, I'd like to address things that we heard. As far as the Luke-Heckla intersection there, we do have a second way out. So for less than half the units that they have across the street, we actually have two ways out. We could either go south through.
Can we just pull up the?
Oh, yeah.
The plan again, just so everybody can look, see. There we go.
Yeah, that's good. So regardless of what happens with Calix to the north, Calix to the south will be available to this development. So that would get you to the south loop of Heckla out to 96th, Courtesy Road. So there are currently two, and then obviously if Calix goes north, that would be another one. Parking, we are planning on providing parking on-site for the residents. Right now, the plan that we have has at least two spaces per dwelling unit. That's what all of the developments around us would have anyway, so, and that's the city requirement before they change the requirements. But that's a, that's pretty standard in residential, that we typically have at least two parking spaces per. And Heckla is underutilized. You can go out there anytime and find parking all the way up and down Heckla. So for additional guest parking, we'll have some guest parking on our main road that goes east-west. But if there needs to be overflow, there's certainly plenty of overflow out on Heckla. So parking, I am not concerned about that. The drainage, all of our drainage is going to go to the east and to the south into that. The drainage, all of our drainage is going to go to the east and to the south, into that area that Michael described on the south side of Lot 1A. So there won't be any drainage from this property into the lanterns. So if they're concerned about drainage, it would only be coming from the city's open space, which it currently does. But we don't control that, so that would not be something that we could change or Again, there is a swath of open space through there that separates this property from the lanterns. So if people are going to be walking in their backyards, they're actually coming from that open space through there. And, you know, again, I don't think we can control people. There's no path through there, but I assume people walk their dogs and so forth through that open space. But again, that's nothing that we can control. That's city-owned property. And as far as ensuring privacy, when we do get into the design of the units, we'll be thinking about, you know, the views in and out of the property and how to sort of mitigate the impact of this project. I might point out that if you look at the rear yard to rear yard and even front to front, there's more space between anything we would build and the lanterns than there's currently between, say, Summit View Drive, you know, house to house. So they're closer now to their neighbors than they're going to be to this built neighbor. So in terms of privacy, it will be more than they're used to having in this neighborhood in terms of distance. So.
Doubling back on that kind of very issue. And right now, the way it's proposed, at 35%, which is standard for housing, that's the step back, and then the only allowance we would be granting is even further back from.
That is correct. And really, the only reason for that, it'd still be, the maximum would be like a three-story, maybe you've got a tuck-under garage, and then two stories on top of that. And so now you're at that 35-foot, you can have flat roofs and be within the 35-foot. We could build the exact same product with all flat roofs and be within the 35, but we're asking for the 40 so that we can articulate the roofs, have sloping roofs that would be more in character with the properties to the north and to the west. There are flat-roofed buildings to the south. We've heard them described as ugly. They're modern, you know, but whatever. That's what you can build in the 35-foot without the variance. And then I have not seen where there's 15 feet of vertical distance, ground to ground from the lanterns to this property. I'll take another look at it, but it seems like that's not what I've seen on the topo maps. But we'll certainly be cognizant of that. So, yeah, those were the comments that we.
Great. All right. Thank you. Do we have a staff response and closing statement?
My only response would be to cover a question that Commissioner Bangs had and that Eric, the applicant, brought up as well, and that would be the right-of-way dedication that's existing. I misinterpreted Commissioner Bangs' question. This portion of this property here is open space and is currently encumbered by the Highline Davidson ditch. The right-of-way at lanterns ends here, and so the green line is reflective of where there is not currently right-of-way, and it does go over what is now city-owned property that was referred to as open space. So I just wanted to clarify that. Other than that, I have no other comments.
All right. We have an additional thoughts, concerns before we close out this portion of it. I mean, yeah, I guess we'll get into it when we discuss further. All right. Seeing none online, I will now close the public hearing, and planning commissioners will deliberate on the evidence presented. During deliberations, no further public comment or other testimony or evidence will be received. Who is on the spot? Who's ready to speak to this, commissioners?
I'll go if nobody else wants to.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Happy to. Thanks, staff. I appreciated the staff report, and in some, I guess, I agree with the staff analysis. I believe this general development plan amendment meets the land use code, that it's consistent with the comp plan, the small area plan, and the housing plan policies that were discussed. So I find myself in support of this. I'm excited to see this move forward, and I'm confident that some of the issues, the important issues that have been raised by the adjacent homeowners and neighborhoods, I feel like those will be able to be sorted out successfully at the PUD stage. So that's where I found myself at this time.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Moline. Commissioner Mahaly?
Yeah, just raised my hand because as I'm sitting here gathering my thoughts to summarize, I think Commissioner Moline, I'm in agreement with Commissioner Moline in summary. I think this is consistent with the comprehensive plan and the motivations and themes for development here. I do stand by my previous comments about looking for traffic pinch points, and when we get into the PUD phase, I would like to see assessment relative to certain modes and directions of travel. And so from a PUD perspective, what I'll be looking for is making sure we're mitigating the impacts to the existing neighborhood, understanding that this is, you know, consistent with our plan moving forward. I still think I'd like to, and I see evidence of the developer taking these things into account in terms of setbacks and being consistent with the theme of the neighborhood. So I very much look forward to that discussion and want to encourage that conversation with the neighborhood to make sure that the impacts to this surrounding area are mitigated. So thank you for the presentation, and I very much am in agreement with Commissioner Moline.
And as we deliberate, I would throw it out there for discussion. This is a landlocked site, and if we end up discussing the potential for Calix being only pedestrian or bicycle, could we even go further with it potentially and say, okay, yeah, we don't need the full 50 feet? All right, right-of-ways are a funny thing. They last forever until they don't, and it's just something to think about. So, Commissioner, yeah, go ahead.
And on that theme, you know, as it pertains to, you know, non-car traffic, you know, particularly pedestrian, there are parks, and there is, I think, Cowboy Park nearby, and then maybe another park that I don't recall the name of in the near area. So in the PUD process, I will be looking for, you know, safety. Safety was brought up by the neighbors, and I think this is a key issue as we're adding density to a previously undeveloped area. I want to make sure we are thinking of pedestrian mobility, especially as it pertains to families walking through parks.
Thank you. Commissioner Bangs?
Yeah, thanks. Yeah, generally agree with Commissioner Mahaly, Commissioner Moline. Again, thanks to staff for the comprehensive packet. Obviously, yeah, it's a rare opportunity that is presented to us here by the applicant in terms of meeting the affordability needs that we know are desperately required and difficult to fulfill with the land parcels that are available in the city. So I'm generally supportive. I do appreciate the public comment as well. They raised some points that we didn't raise as commissioners, so duly noted. And as we've stated, as we go through the PUD process, I think we'll ask the applicant to be cognizant of those initial comments and pay heed to the heights, the privacy concerns, and the other comments with regards to safety and access. So I'm supportive.
Great. Thank you very much. Commissioner Hunt?
I'm not going to repeat all the excellent comments that my colleagues have already made. I agree with them. I want to specifically, I want to commend the staff for really drawing our attention to the various plans and policies that this satisfies. I think that was really helpful. More of that, please. And I am very much in support of this in the sense that I think it does, I'm excited to see it address that missing middle, which I think is, as we've talked about, a huge gap we have here in our city. So I'm looking forward to seeing what they come up with and working with them on the PUD. I would, I think, to address what you brought up, Commissioner Brown Eyes is, I do think, you know, I don't think we know enough yet to get rid of that 50-foot easement. I think I'd like to keep it there because I know that there are people who are concerned about traffic and pinch points, and I want to make sure we keep our options open. That would be my preference on that.
Thank you. Commissioner Basket?
So I also agree with the comments that the fellow commissioners have made. I'm excited about this project. It's the right type of use in the right location with transit proximity, proximity to grocery, proximity to open space, really is a nice little micro-community to drop right into Louisville. So I will be in support of this.
Thank you. Commissioner Choi?
Thanks, Jer. So initially, I was concerned seeing the numbers related to the development units per acre being significantly higher than the adjacent townhomes in Steel Ranch and, you know, verging on the density that you see in apartments just from a infrastructure perspective. And I think that hearing a little bit more about the developer and the property owner now and the applicant and understanding what the intent is of providing the housing type in the area makes me feel much better about it, where it's not so much development for development's sake or driving profit from jamming as many, you know, units into an acre as possible. You know, I would term it more along the lines of at least purported responsible development, which is exactly what we need when we contemplate the shortage of different housing types and market products that are available on the residential side. So all of the concerns that have been raised on the other elements related to the adjacent properties and the systems and infrastructure that serve it are very valid, and I do share the sentiment that I think we're going to work through those during the PUD process. And, you know, also thanks to the staff for the, to the comprehensive packet and for the applicant for working through it with staff to be able to come and bring what I believe to be a viable initial solution for the GDP application. I look forward to the PUD, so I'm in support.
Great. Thank you. I also find myself in support at this time. For as many time as affordable housing, the phrase "affordable housing" has been mentioned in this chamber, this is the closest we've gotten to actually having something built. This is kind of a watershed moment. This strikes me as the real thing. I appreciate the concerns with the area, and having seen any number of different proposals work their way through, I have, I expect we'll be able to work on some of those concerns that have been raised. So I'm actually quite excited for seeing this through. With that, then, I would entertain a roll call vote, please. Oh, well, first, we need a motion. I've been doing this a lot lately. Yes, how about a motion?
Sure, sure. I'll move to approve Resolution 10, Series 2025, for a request for the First Amendment to the North Louisville General Development Plan to allow residential land uses with the GDP amendment.
In a second.
Second.
Second. Thank you. Anna Roll call, please.
Share Brown Eyes?
Yes.
By Share Basket?
Yes.
Commissioner Bangs?
Yes.
Commissioner Choi?
Yes.
Commissioner Hunt?
Yes.
Commissioner Mahaly?
Yes.
Commissioner Moline?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously. All right, then. Moving into our next item of business, a zoning code amendment. Do we have? Yeah, well, yes, thank you. That is such a cool picture. I will now open the public hearing on a request for a zoning code amendment. The purpose of the hearing is to receive evidence regarding the application materials and provide a public forum for all interested parties who wish to comment on this request before the planning commission. The procedure for the public hearing will be as follows. First, there'll be a presentation and testimony by city staff, followed by questions from the planning commission to staff. After this presentation, members of the public who have joined the meeting in person by computer or telephone may speak regarding the application. Anyone who would like to speak in person is asked to complete a speaker card. Use the raise-hand function if participating by computer or star nine. If calling in by telephone, please limit your comments to three minutes per person. Two people present at the meeting may pool their minutes to allow one person to speak for up to a total of six minutes. The purpose of public comment is to receive public testimony. Now, a forum for debate or dialogue. Commenters are encouraged to raise pertinent issues and may ask questions for clarity. However, these questions will not be directly answered during the public comment period. The applicant and staff, the staff, will then be allowed to make a closing statement. I will then close the public hearing, and no further testimony or other evidence will be received unless the commission decides to reopen the hearing. Planning commission will discuss the matter and may approve. Approve with conditions, deny or continue to a future meeting. Public hearings are recorded. For the public record, all testimony must be presented after stating your full name and address. Does anyone participating in this hearing object to the procedure I've described? Seeing none? Do we have notification?
Yes, notice has been met.
Thank you. Do we have any disclosures from commission? Seeing none.
All right. Good evening again, commissioners. Matt Post, Senior Planner, Community Development Team. The item before you now is approval, a request for approval of Resolution 11, Series 2025, recommending to the city council approval of an ordinance amending Title 17 of the Louisville Municipal Code to update the method of measuring required separation distances between natural medicine businesses and schools and childcare facilities. A quick note here, this is a targeted code amendment update at the request of city council. As you all are aware, Colorado voters passed Proposition 122 in November of 2022, which decriminalized the possession, cultivation, sharing, and use of psilocybin and other related substances that are referred to as natural medicine via that state law. Now, the state law permits the supervised use of natural medicine at natural medicine healing centers, and it also allows for the cultivation, manufacture, and testing of natural medicine at natural medicine businesses. The city council adopted ordinance 1887, Series 2024, in December of last year, which permitted natural medicine businesses in the city of Louisville. When we adopted the ordinance, so when staff crafted the ordinance, the ordinance requires a buffer or a separation of uses between natural medicine healing centers specifically and schools or childcare facilities. The state law specifically states that the method of measurement should be a direct pedestrian route from the property line to the closest portion of the building or unit that contains the natural medicine business or use. Well, with the opportunity to regulate time, place, and manner of the natural medicine business, staff elected to adopt a property-line-to-property-line measurement technique. This was, obviously went through review with our attorneys to ensure that we were still in line with the state law. We were. We had the opportunity to continue to regulate, again, time, place, and manner in that way and extend our buffer requirement. The reason we did so was really for the ease of staff administration and just determining a buffer analysis, and then also in consideration of the amount of schools and childcare facilities in relation to downtown, and then the amount of commercial uses that are available downtown or spaces downtown. We never received a natural medicine healing application until one individual downtown asked, and she was told that she doesn't meet the standard based on the property-line-to-problem line measurement. And city council requested that we consider amending the ordinance to adopt the pedestrian route measurement technique as opposed to the property-line-to-property-line measurement. So this amendment is, again, updates the 1,000-foot separation. As mentioned, our previous method was a property-line-to-property-line measurement. This particular update is now a direct pedestrian route measured from the property line of the school or childcare facility to the nearest portion of a building or unit containing the natural medicine business use. Importantly, if you recall, again, the state law only requires that that buffer apply to natural medicine healing centers, which is where natural medicine is administered. We elected to adopt the buffer applied to all natural medicine business uses. That would include manufacturing, cultivation, and testing. The important point there is that cultivation- The important point there is that cultivation, manufacturing, and testing is only permitted in industrial zone districts, which is only in the CTC. So there was no significant restriction by applying that to natural medicine businesses as a whole across the city. So the old language was no natural medicine business may be, or the existing language, rather, the currently adopted language is no natural medicine business may be located within 1,000 feet of a childcare center, preschool, elementary school, high school, residential childcare facility, and that the distance shall be determined by a direct measurement from the nearest property line of the land used for the use to the nearest property line of the land used for a natural medicine business. We're updating that method of measurement to say that the distance shall be calculated by measuring the most direct pedestrian route from the nearest property line of the land used to the nearest portion of the building or unit where the natural medicine healing center use will be located. The measurement shall reflect a safe and lawful walking path without trespassing or use of alleys and shall follow designated pedestrian routes and include right angle crossings while observing all traffic signals and traffic regulations. Of course, we anticipate this to only impact natural medicine healing centers. And of course, that's where natural medicine is administered. We, the impact, again, will likely be on downtown where natural medicine healing centers may now be permitted in some areas of downtown where they were not previously. Obviously, we can't generate a buffer map for this particular application just because we can obviously calculate all kinds of pedestrian routes. We would have to have specific locations, so there's no buffer map available. But staff will now utilize the existing, I'm sorry, the pedestrian route measurement in this particular scenario. And I'm just noticing, I'll double check this in the ordinance, but my language here says natural medicine healing center. I do believe we still wanted to retain the natural medicine business language. So maybe during deliberation, we can double check that, and that might be worth conditioning here if I may have meant to say natural medicine business as opposed to natural medicine healing center and the additional language here. So with that, staff recommend approval of Resolution 11, Series 2025, recommending to the City Council approval of an ordinance amending Title 17 of the LMC to update the method of measuring required, requiring separation distances between natural medicine businesses and schools and childcare facilities. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. We'll open it up to questions.
Chair, I have a question. So, Ms. Post, I appreciate the exacting language of what is a pretty lengthy amendment to that ordinance. It makes me think that I didn't contemplate this when we first talked about this adoption, whenever it was a couple of years ago. We've contemplated this in terms of establishing the distances between where natural medicine centers, natural medicine businesses can be placed based on essentially the current locations of schools and childcare facilities. Based on the language that's proposed, is there an inadvertent consequence if a natural medicine business or healing center is established that would then prevent the future development of another school or a childcare facility if it was within 1,000 feet?
There is not, no. There's a specific provision in the state bill that states that an existing natural medicine business or healing center is not precluded from continuing operation if a licensed childcare facility or school were to be established after that business was already established.
Okay. And the language also wouldn't prevent the childcare facility or the school from being established?
To my knowledge, correct. There's obviously state licensing requirements, but I didn't, that wasn't present to me in the bill through reading it, yeah.
Interesting. Okay. So even with this language, ostensibly, we could have a childcare facility adjacent to a natural healing center if...
They chose to open there.
They chose to do that.
Correct.
Correct. All right. Thank you. That's my only question.
Commissioner Mahaly?
Thank you. Yeah, thank you, Commissioner Choi. I have the same question. So given the language in terms of pedestrian routes, how does this work with crosswalks? And are, you know, is it measured with official crosswalks only or, you know? So let's be honest, even if there is a crosswalk with the signal, not everyone uses that and they just go across the street. So if you have a building across the street from each other, but the crosswalk is 100 feet down the road, not saying it would be that far, but just as an example, would that be effectively a 200-foot distance as measured? Because you'd have to go 100 foot down across the road and 100 foot back? How does this all, how does this work? And how does the language pertain specifically to how it's measured relating to crossing the street?
Yeah. And the example that you provided, Commissioner Mahaly, I would say, Mahaly, I would say yes, that we would, we'll, based on the language, we'll look to ensure that an individual is not, I guess what we would colloquially call jaywalking to access the pedestrian or to measure the pedestrian route. And what was the second part of your question? I'm sorry.
I just wanted to make sure I had it right. And I do have some concerns there, which we can talk about. I just wanted to understand exactly how they were measuring it. And, you know, the question was, is it only using official crosswalks for, you know, the point of making it a measurement as it pertains to the regulation?
Well, the language concerning right angle crossings and that, right? It doesn't have to be a painted crosswalk on the ground? But it'll follow the, the kind of, I think you're describing it as kind of a more strict approach or potentially a longer approach then might actually occur?
That's what I'm getting at, exactly.
Related to that, I mean, there, if I'm not remembering incorrectly, there are lots of intersections that aren't painted crosswalks.
Yeah.
Right.
That's exactly what I'm getting at.
You don't need a painted crosswalk.
Right.
I would say that, yeah, I would say that, yeah, to answer, I guess, answer this question more thoroughly. If there is an intersection, a traffic-controlled intersection or even not, right? Where there's two sidewalks, right? Where there are public rights of way, where there's not a crosswalk. I think based on the language, including it right angle crossings while observing traffic signals and traffic regulations, I think that we can safely say that that will be, that would be the safe pedestrian route, and they wouldn't have to shoot all the way down the street 200 feet to a painted crosswalk. That, yeah, we would, we would absolutely interpret this method of measurement in that, in that way, yes.
And that's my key point, because I don't want to only use, I don't want to effectively shorten it by saying, oh, well, the painted crosswalk is two blocks that way. So just out the gate, you've already added four blocks walking distance to something that is, in reality, someone's just going to walk across the street right there at the intersection.
Can you just put that language back up on the screen so we can see it?
Does anybody know where that picture is?
Start again here. Hold on.
Yeah, I don't see anything in there about painted crosswalks. So I would not interpret that to require painted crosswalks. It's just right angle crossings.
Yeah, we have to check the law. I'm poking at the lawful walking path is what I'm getting at. I'm not sure how the law finds that.
I don't think that I would not interpret that as requiring, legally requiring there to be painted crosswalks.
No.
I just want to be sure of that exact point.
Yep. All right. Any additional questions for staff? I have a couple. So right now, alcohol and marijuana are still using the existing definition, not the proposed one, right?
For separation?
Yeah.
Yes, correct. This is a completely separate provision in separation distance measurement. Yes. Yeah.
Great.
Correct.
Chair Brown Eyes, I have a quick question.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I'm just reading the packet again. So, Senior Planner Post, quick question. Just, it says in the packet that this amendment aligns the city's ordinance with state law. So is this, is this definition or this interpretation akin to other cities? Or is this going to be an anomaly compared to other cities?
No, it is. We did actually utilize another jurisdiction here in Colorado for the direct pedestrian route. They did adopt similar language. And so we looked, we did specifically, the city of Grand Junction has similar language. We actually pulled back from what the city of Grand Junction has measured here. But, so the measurement shall reflect a safe and lawful walking path without the trespassing or use of alleys. Those, that's the information that we added. I'd have to look at the state bill to see exactly what it, what the information is in there. But, yeah, we are not, so the beginning or the first half of the additional language is pretty identical to what's in the state bill right now. And then the second half was just ensuring that we're able to actually determine what a safe pedestrian walking path is if it's presented to us. And that's from the, and we utilized the city of Grand Junction with what they had adopted already.
Okay, thanks.
So your language is further, your second sentence is further defining direct pedestrian route, which is the standard from the statute?
Correct.
Great.
And we can verify that in the bill, too.
Additional questions for staff? So I think as we move forward, we will accept that it should state that it's natural medicine business in here? Okay. Unless anybody's concerned about that? No? All right. Seeing none. No additional questions of staff? Do we have any public comment online? I see none in the room, none online. Thank you. I assume that's your closing statement as well?
Yes.
Thank you very much. All right. I'll now close the public hearing, and the planning commissioners will deliberate on the evidence presented. During deliberations, no further public comment or other testimony or evidence will be received. Who would like to begin? I'll throw it out there a little bit. I think when we look back at the history of these separation laws, right? Originally derived surrounding alcohol sales and bars and that sort of thing. I think this is kind of a whole different animal. This is not a retail operation. And so I'm actually kind of comfortable with this for that reason. I don't, kids are not welcome in these facilities. So I, I guess the one thought I had had was, I was, you know, sort of taken aback. I think for a while, there was perhaps a noncompliant large giant marijuana sign. I don't think that's the approach that these facilities would take. And I'm not convinced that having that 800 feet from a school or 1,000 feet from a school is that big of an impact in this kind of situation. So other thoughts? Commissioner?
I tend to agree with you, Chair Brown Eyes. And I think it's reasonable to align our statute with, our ordinance with the state statute to sort of protect the purposes of the state law and also to not entirely preclude these kinds of businesses from opening in our city. I agree that they are likely to be very different types of businesses than, say, a liquor store. More, they're more like, they're really healing centers. Whatever you might think of them, I don't think they're going to have the same kind of impact. So I have no problem with this.
Great. Thank you. All right. How about online? Commissioner Moline, you're often ready for us.
Sorry about that. Yes, I'm going to be in support as well. I appreciated what the two of you just mentioned. And, yeah, I'm, I guess my main actual concern at this point for this kind of language is as long as it's something that the staff will find easy to interpret and utilize to kind of regulate this. And so I'm assuming that's true with the, with this being staff-generated, so I'm going to be in support.
Great. Thank you.
Yeah.
Commissioner Choi?
Sure. I think it's nuanced, and geometrically, right angles are generally going to lead to a longer path than a straight line. So thumbs up.
Okay, great. Thank you. Commissioner Basket?
Well, I find it to be a bit overcomplicated to do it this way. And I envision staff out there with the wheels, measuring the distance and figuring out every permutation that is possible. But in order to support the city council's wish for this language and the practicality of it seems, we'll figure it out as we go along. It's not like we're going to have 100 of these businesses coming to Louisville. So I can be in support of it, given that I don't think we'll have a lot of times that we have to use this measurement.
Great. Thank you. Commissioner Banks?
Yep. I have no questions or concerns, so I'll be in support.
All right. Commissioner Mahaly?
Yeah, I think I voiced my concern, which I think is alleviated, assuming, you know, in terms of what the right angle crossing of roads means. My, just to say it another way, my initial concern was that distances would be artificially shortened, in effect, by having, you know, only counting certain crossings, which would add artificially extra distance. But with that not sounding to be the case, in terms of consistency with state ordinance and direction the town wants to go, I think this is fair, so I will be voting yes.
Thanks. And thanks for raising that issue. But, I mean, I actually do think that the language does artificially create a buffer that may not be truly that 1,000-feet buffer, especially the language about avoiding alleys, right? People walk through alleys all the time. For understandable reasons, it needs to be avoided for the sake of this language, so.
I mean, for the, for the situation, perhaps they're trying to avoid. I think the people will be using alleys, to your point.
Yeah, but I, yeah, yeah. But I, but I don't feel it threatens the safety of schoolchildren, so. All right. Any additional deliberations? Seeing none. How about a motion? Please. Thank you.
Move approval of zoning code amendment, Resolution 11, Series 2025, recommending to the City Council approval of an amendment to the Louisville Municipal Code, Title 17, zoning concerning natural medicine businesses to address how the distances measured between such businesses and other land uses.
I'll just add, on the condition of changing natural medicine healing center to natural medicine business.
Proposed language, yes. You can conclude in your initial motion?
Yes, including the correction of the term to match the rest of the language in the ordinance.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
Thank you. A roll call vote, please.
Share Brown Eyes?
Yes.
By Share Basket?
Yes.
Commissioner Banks?
Yes.
Commissioner Choi?
Yes.
Commissioner Hunt?
Yes.
Commissioner Mahaly?
Sorry, I cut out. This is a roll call.
Yes.
Commissioner Mahaly?
Yes.
Commissioner Moline?
Yes.
Thank you all. Motion carries. Thank you for your work on that. All right. I'll now open it up for any planning commission comments.
My only comment is, how can we only be on Resolution 11? It's September. We've had a really slow year.
It's been a quiet year. Yes. All right. Any additional comments? Yes, please.
I actually have a question for staff about the status of the comprehensive plan and when it might be coming back to the planning commission.
Yeah, so we, we're having to substantially kind of rework a lot of the plan internally, which is fine. So it's just causing a bit of a delay. Our plan is to have an upcoming round of community engagement before the holidays on the public review draft of the plan. And so the hope would be to come back to planning commission in and around that time, November, December, with a public review draft of the plan for review.
Before it's, before you have the community engagement?
Possibly, yeah. Not, not, not sure yet how to sequence that the best, but possibly, yeah, right around the same time.
Okay. So we'll be expecting the next draft with some heavy revisions, perhaps? All right.
Yeah, yeah.
Great.
Happy to go into more detail, too. It's the 30,000-foot. But there's a lot going on on that front. Just not quite ready for prime time yet.
Okay, then we don't get any more detail. If it's not, if it's not ready for prime time, it's not ready for us.
It needs a lot of work from what, what we got. So, yeah, yeah.
All right. Thanks. Any additional commissioner comments? Seeing none. And we will now, we've got a number of, so we're going to discuss the, we do have a number of issues upcoming.
Yeah, just wanted to call your attention to, you know, we had a little bit of a lull the last couple of months, but there's a flood of cases coming your way per your point about the resolution numbers. Those will be upticking soon. We have the special meeting of September 12. We have the special meeting on September 25th, which I know you can't come to, Jennifer, but just reminder of that. And then October, November are really busy. I think we've got six or seven cases that are all time-sensitive to varying degrees per state law requirements and getting things through the process. So just calling your attention to the fact that there's a busy agenda upcoming, and there may be more on your agendas, three or four cases instead of two or three. So just be mindful of that.
Thank you very much.
We'll try to avoid a second meeting in October or November, but all kind of depends on how things go.
Are these ones that are identified for September 25th, October 9th, and November 13th, are those pretty solidly set?
For September 25th, yes, for sure. That's actually three cases, even though it looks like two. October 9th, I would say two of the three are for sure, and then the Coal Creek Village development is, we're optimistic it's going to go, but there's a lot going on with that one as well.
And just to be aware that there may not be potential for a November overflow because of Thanksgiving?
Right, yes, yep.
All right. With that, then I entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
In a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all.